Get money back on and you can renegotiate the debt simultaneously. I would really highly encourage that. We can give you a briefing. We have lawyers that are litigating currently in California around the same things because they did it everywhere. Lastly, I have heard from a colleague in a neighboring district that today they were informed by the federal government that their title funding will be frozen. You are dealing with an uncertainty in this climate environment that is unprecedented, and it means you need an emergency plan, a contingency upon which if the TIF dollars don't come in because the budget crisis expands at the city level and they can't do it for whatever reason, you don't have to double the number of cuts mid-year. A hundred million dollars if you are short mid-year would be about 1,000 teaching positions, normally, but doing it mid-year makes it 2,000. Think of the instability, the chaos, the harm to children that that would cause. If you don't have a contingency plan and this madman in the White House comes down and slashes more SNAP benefits, school lunches, you name it, then we are in deep trouble. So there are harms that are bad and then there are harms that are worse. I'm not saying you have great choices, but some are better than others, so measure them twice. Lastly, I know I just said that, but one last thing is that if you took 0.25% of the $8 billion in tax relief the wealthiest 5% of people in Illinois just received from the Trump administration, you could restore all the SNAP benefits. If you took and taxed the rest of that amount, we'd be in surplus, so would the rest of the school districts in the state. We'd finish and finalize a transit plan to fill in the gaps. We'd restore Medicaid funding for our most vulnerable students and families, and we'd have additional resources for other needs that are critical. So I ask you to really talk to one another. You're not in an enviable situation, but you didn't sign up for that either.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. And I do appreciate there's unity on this board around no cuts to the classroom that is remarkable, necessary, admirable, and insufficient. So I hope you get your heads together and we can figure out a way to walk this tight robe collectively while we demand full funding from the state, J.B. Pritzker, and do that together. A campaign plan for that goal should be attached to any budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Before we begin with the next speaker, I would like to acknowledge Charles Mayfield, Chief Operating Officer, who joined us at 4:47 in person. The next union rep is Jen Conant, CTU Charter Division Chair, who is here in person.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Good to see you all again. As you know, I'm Jen Conant, a longtime charter educator and the chair of CTU's Charter Division. I know that you all are facing challenging decisions regarding the budget. There are a lot of unknowns right now about where additional funding may come from and who needs to make the pension payment. I'm here to say that your guiding principle in all of these questions and decisions is to mitigate negative impact on students and to leave yourself as many options as possible. Over the past few years, but especially last year, we saw the devastating impact of school and program closures in the charter space at ASERO, ASPIRA, and the pre-K program at Passages. This board took action to ensure that the number of closures were reduced and that students came first by doing something CPS has not done before, taking over management of five ASERO schools starting next year. This board was committed to keeping our school communities whole. I'm calling on this board to do the same thing now, keep our school communities whole. Cuts to hot lunches, crossing guards, and to custodial staff are painful for our school communities. We need to fight for additional funding so that our students don't go without hot lunches and essential services and so that our school buildings remain clean and functional. We have to call on the Illinois General Assembly and the governor to provide funding for our students that our schools deserve. All students deserve a fully funded education. And while advocacy for funding is essential, we cannot bank on it. If we don't receive additional funds, the district's budgeting issue should not fall on our students' backs with additional cuts to staffing and furlough days mid-year. Please ensure that you have options to keep our school communities whole without cuts, just like you stepped in to keep our charter school communities whole. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Before we begin with the next speaker, I would like to, for the record, Chair Board Member Pope joined us at 4:49 PM in person. The next union rep is Tremaine Reeves, SEIU Local 73, Director of the CPS Division, who is joining us in person.
Good afternoon, everyone. Had a chance to share with you all earlier, pretty much going to share and reemphasize the same thing, but I'll make it more brief. Basically, months ago, I believe on or around March, this board passed a resolution outlining the qualifications for the CEO of Chicago Public Schools moving forward. Based on that, SEIU sent a letter stressing the need for a fair process and our hope for the most qualified person to fill the role of interim CEO of Chicago Public Schools. Dr. Macklin King was the mayor's office choice of who they thought was the most qualified to fill that role. Since then, Dr. King dove right in, hosting community meetings where parents and labor partners were able to voice their concerns around the budget deficit, their concerns around the shuffling of SICAs with the cluster program, which is still an outlying issue for us, the impact of decisions that they have on the students. So now when it comes to the budget deficit, Dr. King has proposed a budget that was thoughtful of all of those factors, and she presented one that does not call for additional cuts to the classrooms, to the schools, that we all agree on. What we don't agree on is her methodology, and that's what's concerning. If the most qualified person in the mayor's eyes has presented a budget that does not call for additional cuts, I don't understand the need to want to reject that proposed budget and take a risk on taking out a loan, where history has shown CPS that when taking out a loan, it is the workers that suffers, because when it's time to ante up or pay up, the workers are asked to take wage freezes in an economy like this that's devastating to families, to working families. The workers are asked to take furlough days in an economy like this, again, devastating to working families. So we would ask that you do the responsible thing and you trust the mayor's opinion of the most qualified person to fill this role. You trust her proposed budget that does not call for that risk. Do not take out a loan that will harm workers in the long run and dig CPS in a deeper hole. Do not take out a loan that's going to harm working families and ultimately harm students, and do not reimburse the city for making the pension payment that has historically always paid up until Mayor Lightfoot. So again, Dr. King, when you're doing the right thing, which is with this, you've shown our union that you are willing to listen to families and you are willing to listen to workers. When you're doing that, we will support that action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. President Harden, we are now ready to call speakers from the speakers list. We have Roy Baldwin, Speaker Number One, who is here in person.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I hope I don't have a headache when I leave this meeting, but I will say this. As a former LSC, well, first of all, let me clear something for the record. I see where it had me as the speaker representing Marshall High School. I'm not here to represent Marshall. I'm just here to speak on the budget. I had an opportunity to attend one of the meetings on the west side of Chicago for the budget. That's something that had never been done before in CPS during the time that I served on LSCs, where the community was allowed to come in and work with you all on the budget to give ideals. I heard a lot of interesting ideals, and I will say this, for the 22 years that I had served on LSCs, several LSCs, there were many times that we did not agree with a lot of things in the budget, but we got it done. And I'm hoping that this board can do the same thing. Now, I'm listening to a lot of the funding sources. I'm trying to understand where is the money going to come from or if it's going to actually come in, because I'm hearing different stories in the media about monies that we're anticipating on coming in that we're not getting yet. Make it happen. The thing that bothered me earlier today, I was listening to some parents and some students that made comments, you know, "We don't really want to hear things like this from the individuals." Well, they don't have any money. They might close the schools. Well, don't think like that, because that's not what we're trying to think about. But I just want you guys to work together and get this done any way you possibly can, which is what we did with LSCs, and I'm hoping that you can get to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, Michael Brunson, Speaker Number Two, will be joining us in person.
This is my hero. I just met my hero, y'all. Okay, look, I want to talk about this budget fiasco, and I just want to remind everybody that this is essentially a political issue. Can everybody hear me? I don't always come through clear. And I want to submit that there is a direct connection between a failing and cash-strapped education system and poverty in the city and civic disruption, crime, and the horrendous violence that's occurring in this city. We have to fix this educational system. Right now CPS is crying broke and reducing services. Meanwhile, billions of dollars are being traded right down the street at the Chicago Board of Trade, untaxed. And so what I'm saying is you need to find, you know, another revenue stream, and I say the biggest, the mother lode, the one that you need to go after is a financial transaction tax. Now, you didn't always have money coming in from the lottery, but it happened. You didn't always have that financial transact, and what is that other thing that you're getting from the city, that other tax that you're getting from the city? That came about. It's time for a financial transaction tax. The Chicago Board of Trade sits in there. They have thousands of transactions, billions of dollars flying through there every day.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
And just because one man says that he's going to stop it if it tries to go into law, everybody stands down. We outnumber him. I think everybody needs to get on board with that, and we need to stop fooling around and go for the big money, and that money is right there at the Chicago Board of Trade, and we need to institute a financial transaction tax so we can finally get enough money to fix our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, Michelle Ludwig, Speaker Number Three, is joining us in person.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Michelle Ludwig. I'm a teacher at De Priest Elementary School on the west side. I am a proud product of Illinois public education from kindergarten all the way through grad school. I played clarinet and tenor saxophone in band, competed in sports, and attended journalism events in high school. My college education was funded by MAP and Pell Grants. I had an enriching and joyful education experience. My CPS students deserve to have the same. Therefore, we cannot choose to cut positions and programs. Please do not cut any more teaching positions. IEP minutes are not being met due to special education cuts. Opportunities to be creative are lost when cuts are made to art, music, and library. How does CPS expect to recruit and retain teachers when they may be laid off or experience burnout due to working with bare minimum resources? Do not cut cafeteria workers and food supplies. Our students deserve warm, healthy meals multiple times a day. Do not cut safe passage workers. The federal agents are coming. They will be here sooner rather than later. They will not make our communities safer. It is our own community members who make communities safer. Let's invest in our communities, especially on the south and west sides. Let's invest in sustainable community schools. Let's become a sustainable community school district. And let's tax the rich. If I can pay $10,000 in taxes each year, there's no reason why a billionaire can't. They make 10,000 times my salary. They can pay. So stop giving them tax breaks. Let's go to Springfield together. Let's demand our schools are equitably funded. Board members, I urge you to pass a budget that fully funds our schools and gives our students what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Shanee Stevens, Speaker Number Five, who is joining us in person.
Hi, I'm Shanee Stevens, a proud product of CPS, a parent of CPS students, and a math teacher at Duke Ellington Elementary. Today I emphasize the urgent need for equitable funding across Chicago Public Schools. If I ever speak to someone and they tell me they do not understand, it's not their fault. It's because our schools have been underfunded. Education is the foundation of communication, knowledge, and opportunity. When we allow chronic disinvestment, we deny our young people the tools they need to thrive. When communities face despair, schools must be the hope. Schools must be the place where students discover their power, learn to think critically, and prepare to lead with integrity. But this hope cannot exist without resources. We must unite, take a stand, and come together to ensure that every student in CPS receives the education they deserve. Our students should be learning about biases, about civic responsibility, and how to vote for leaders who serve the good of all and not just the wealthy few. That means we must send a direct message to everyone in Illinois. Education must come first. This commitment must be began with a fair budget. This is our moment to put education first, not as a slogan, but as a promise. As elections come, to speak to your constituents yourselves and make sure they advocate to the state to provide $1.6 billion to schools across Illinois. Students are watching, and they deserve nothing less. Let's not allow CPS to be a part of the Hunger Games.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, Andrea Parker, is joining us virtually. Andrea, please press star six to unmute.
Hello. Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Board of Education, for the work that you are doing. I am Andrea Parker. I am an alumni of Hyde Park Career Academy. Now it's just Hyde Park Academy minus the career. I am also a parent of a CPS alum who also went to Hyde Park, and I'm currently a reading teacher for Robert Fullson Elementary, and I have been a CPS teacher for nearly 22 years. And I just pray that my words here at the Board of Education meeting will not be in vain. I pray that my words will settle in your spirits, and I pray that it will provoke change, because I am tired of the status quo. I am tired of rubber stamps. I am tired of coming to meetings and hearing meetings of us imploring you to make changes on behalf of our students, and there is not. So I am praying that this will be a change in the way that we do things at the board, and I just pray that we will hold those who have money, which is the rich, accountable for paying taxes. And I pray that you tell them that taxes is not something that is something that is being taken away from, is their contribution to the next generation of people who want to make this country great. I am tired of all the resources annually being taken away from our children, and what happens to children that have no resources, that lack the education, that lack the skills that teachers give them? You create an opportunity gap, and when there is an opportunity gap, our students go to school and they don't know what they want to do with their lives. They don't know what career they want to have because they have not been exposed. So our children can't get the scholarships they need because they can't compete. They don't get the jobs they want because they cannot compete. And what do you do? You create marginalized communities. You create generations of people who are not reaching their dreams, who are hopeless and are teaching their children the same thing. So I hope that we tax the rich, that we find creative revenue to keep our students educated to the best of our ability. I do not want this, again, like the previous speaker said, to be a slogan. I pray that we put our children first, and I don't want to be here next year again crying and begging you to create a budget that is equitable for all of our children. Our children deserve the best. Our children deserve all the resources they need to be successful and to compete globally.
If you could please conclude your remarks.
So please take my words seriously. Take all of what we're saying seriously and make CPS, again, a school that is worth attending.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker, McCarek Fitzgerald, Speaker Number Nine, is joining us in person.
Hello. My name is McCarek Fitzgerald. I'm a graduate of Lane Tech High School. I'm currently a special education classroom assistant at Harriet Tubman Elementary, and I'm a proud member of SEIU Local 73. I'm here today because my colleagues and I were told that changes to the budget were not cuts, but instead considerations. I'm calling BS. Cutting 600 SICA positions is not a staffing consideration. It's hanging already vulnerable communities out to dry. Also, cuts to transportation, lunches, crossing guards, and custodial staff are jeopardizing the health and safety of our students on a daily basis. Our students do not need less. They deserve more and they need more, especially under the constant attacks from the Trump administration. I'm here to call BS on J.B. Pritzker and the Democrats. Pritzker could be taxing the rich, but instead he's giving himself and the rest of them tax breaks. All the while, Chicago's students and educators are owed $1.6 billion. Board of Education, what I'm asking of you is not radical. It's simple. Do your job. Get down to Springfield and demand the schools that our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Kirti Nandan, Speaker Number 10, is joining us in person.
Hi, y'all. My name is Kirti. I'm a special education teacher, and it's day two. And as a special education teacher, I can tell you that our paraprofessionals are already frustrated. Breaks are being eaten into, lunches are not being given, our school has a shortage of five paraprofessional positions, and we're being told that there are not cuts being made to the classroom. It's day two, and we already having kids that only place that they can get a hot meal is school, and those meals are being taken away, and we're being told that there are not cuts to the classroom. I come from a district where I've literally met parents whose kids have been hit by cars, and you're taking away crossing guards and telling us that there are not cuts to the classroom. So it's a little frustrating to keep hearing this message being told to us that there are not cuts being made to the classroom when these things that are being cut are cuts to our students and are cuts to the classroom. And it doesn't stop there. Even things like having custodians to keep our classrooms clean for our students, we're being told that, oh, we don't have enough staff. They're already working overtime, and now we're being, those positions are being cut, and then they're telling us there are not cuts to the classrooms. So I guess as a teacher, what we need from you as a district is not keep spinning this and keep telling us that these aren't cuts to the classroom. They are. And instead, what we need is for you to fight, please. We fight every day for our kids. We need to see you fighting just as hard for more funding. Lobby in Springfield, show up with these legislators, push back and demand the billions of dollars that you are owed with the formula that they gave you. Fight for this money. Fund and tax these billionaires. Fund the schools and tax the billionaires. Don't tell us to keep fighting for the kids and then turn around and cut resources from them, wanting our kids to have warm meals, clean classrooms for them to learn in, safe water for them to drink. None of that is too much. Stop telling us these aren't cuts to the classroom. They are. Our kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Carla Rivera, Speaker Number 11, is joining us in person.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Carla Rivera. I am a mother of a second-grade student at Georgia Grisdom and a pre-K4 student at Wendell Smith, both located in the southeast. I'm also a parent, a parent mentor leadership development program, which works with dozens of parents from the east side in Hewitt, Hewitt South Dorian Pullman Community to increase their involvement in our neighborhood schools. For years, parents in our communities have felt that our schools have been left behind when it comes to the district budget. As an example, my son has an IEP. He needs to see a speed pathologist. This is an essential support that he needs in order to develop and be successful. It impacts his ability to communicate, to socialize, and to learn. Last year, he only was, he only, he was only given 30 minutes a week due to a lack of resources. Imagine the burden that this placed on me and my husband to fill in the gaps. Neither of us are trained speed pathologists, but we tried our best. My story is not unique. In black and brown communities, parents shoulder the burden of underfunded schools, because parents will do anything to help their kids succeed. We stretch ourselves financially and emotionally to take on the roles of tutors when staff are cut, to take the role of cooks when hot meals are cut, to take on the role of libraries because our schools don't have any. These are burdens that never show up in your budget line.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Within, with this in mind, I urge the BS and the Board of, and the Board to only pass this budget if you can guarantee no cuts during the year. The budget must leave room to borrow and take care of all CPS responsibilities. Why do Trump cuts funding to the state or CPS? Does the budget include a plan to avoid mid-year cuts? If the answer is no, then it's not the budget that our kids deserve.
Please conclude your remarks.
I am also willing to help you if you want us to go to Springfield and fight for our kids. Get a bus, get us there. I will get you as many parents as I can to advocate and to make sure that we get what we deserve. Please fight for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, Speaker Jessie Bostick, Speaker Number 13, is joining us in person.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. King, my name is Jessie Bostick, and I teach fourth grade at Walt Disney Magnet School. I'm happy to be here to speak to all of you about my and my students' experience in the classroom. As you can imagine, I'm pretty tired after a long day of routines, procedures, and beginning learning. So far, we've already chosen books from the classroom library that I want to grant to purchase. We played games to explore the difference between visual and numerical representations of numbers from a book that I received from a colleague. I don't know about you, but that's not something I remember doing the first week of fourth grade, nor is it the only example. All across this city, dedicated educators are building relationships and thinking of ways to challenge their students. The educators and students of the city have pushed student achievement to new heights despite the interruptions of the pandemic. This is a huge celebration for our district, as well as a testament to what is possible with fully funded schools. Imagine what we could achieve by fully funding our schools, not on an emergency pandemic basis, but permanently. Although CPS has presented a budget that avoids furlough days and cuts to the classroom, the rhetoric has not changed. Let me be very clear, this is about children. This is not about no to this loan, maybe to that pension payment. This is about children. This is about whether or not we have resources in our classrooms. Stop referring to my students and their learning conditions in dollars. You owe them fully funded, safe, and clean classrooms. If Governor Pritzker and the legislature come together to sustainably fund our schools with the law they passed, the governor can prove that his leadership is an example of successful democratic governance. I know he needs to look good for his upcoming presidential run.
Please conclude your remarks.
I appreciate your attention to this matter, and I hope you will put our children ahead of the wealthy on your list of priorities when you consider this budget. Thank you.
President Harden, we also have elected officials who would like to address the Alderman Andre Vesquez, 40th Ward, is here virtually. Please press star. Please press star six to unmute. Elderman Andre Vasquez, please press star six to unmute. Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Elderperson Andre Vasquez of the 40th Ward, currently served by two of the board members, Board Member Ebony De Berry and Board Member Debbie Pope. I'm calling, first and foremost, as a Chicagoan who has himself gone through four different public schools growing up as a result of gentrification and being displaced. And so, first, I want to add my voice to all of those saying that we need to get more funding from the state. It's absolutely right that Springfield should put some funds towards what we see as a problem, just the way they are for the CPS fiscal cliff, and I do think there are ways to do that related to who gets taxed and having the wealthiest pay their fair share in order to do so. I say that because I think there's a large agreement on that. We all have concerns about the cuts that have been happening, about members of SEIU Local One and SEIU 73 being made, being made to suffer cuts and having to be forced to get them into the rooms as far as conversations related to this. But I want to talk about the city council's role and city government's role. We, the city, City Hall, is state mandated to cover the pension payments. That is law. It is not a policy, it is not a decision, it is law. What occurred in the past term under Mayor Lightfoot is she entered into an agreement with CPS where they would start paying back some of what we as a city are mandated to pay. Back then, when Mayor Lightfoot was doing it, people looked at it as a bully tactic, because what they realized is that the city has more ability to raise revenue and raise taxes than CPS does, which is currently capped at either 5% or CPI, whichever is lower. So as we advocate for more funding from the state, we should also be advocating to raise the cap. Now that the board is duly elected, they can make the responsible decisions about raising revenue that every other elected official does, and we are happy to join in making those calls. Now, the reason why I mention Mayor Lightfoot and how people call it a bully tactic is it is currently happening again. It does not make sense for the city to add a $175 million pension payment onto CPS, which is again capped as to how much revenue it can raise. And forcing them to potentially take out a loan isn't solving any problem at all, it is delaying one and making it worse. What we will see in future years, should there be no revenue coming in, and you take out a loan at an interest rate and have to pay it back, is the same thing that happens to families that pay credit cards and max those out. You will continue to be in debt and have to make larger and deeper cuts. It could potentially bankrupt and ruin the school system. The same way we look at our city because of past irresponsibility by past mayors and that we now have to have a billion-dollar deficit every single year, doing this kind of step as a budget would have you joining our club, a billion-dollar deficit every single year, not making it easier at all. I heard that there was mention that the city council said that they wouldn't give TIF surplus. That is just not true. It is simply untrue to say that. The way it works is we have to solve our own budget. In order to solve our own budget, we need to take out a TIF surplus. We need to drain those TIFs to be able to pay our own. And by the state mandate, whenever we do that, CPS is entitled to 52% of those funds. So if you think that there's a way that we solve our budget without going into TIF, we can go to a one-on-one course on what budgets are. Anyone who's telling you that we're going to withhold a TIF is lying to you. It is fake hostage, it's fake extortion. What we need to understand fully is that any choice that includes either the loan or the pension payment on this budget will lead to larger problems for CPS. When Pedro Martinez said this, he was a villain and a bad guy, and then for that, he was fired and Mayor Johnson appointed, CEO Macaline King, who looked at the numbers and looked at the homework and came to the exact same decision. And that should be thought about. I know that a lot of neighbors out here want to make sure schools are fully funded, we all do. What we don't want to see is them to be put in worse condition because of debt and because of being made to take on payments that CPS cannot afford. So I would urge anyone here who cares about our children, who cares about the teachers, who cares about the staff, who doesn't want to see cuts, to not go forward with taking on the payment that we should be paying as a city, state mandated, and not to take on a debt, because it is going to lead to larger cuts down the line.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
It is why SEIU 73 and other unions have made that clear, and so every member up here, you have a lot on your conscience, because you have the future of our education and the future of our city in your hands, and I urge you to make the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Elderman Scott Wagusback from the 32nd Ward. Please press star six to unmute. Elderman Scott Wagusback, please press star six to unmute.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to hear from other elected officials here today and earlier this, this morning with the prior meeting. As a city council member who's been part of the city council for some time now, I just want to say thank you to the CPS staff for the budget that has really taken on, I think, a different approach. The, you know, the balanced approach that this one is taking is not something that everyone believes is the perfect choice, but it's as close as we can get. And I do support the priorities that CPS has tried to lay out with protecting the school budgets. I did look at the trimming that they did from the budget through the central office that made sure to keep critical staff, teachers, programs that are needed for our children. I also wanted to say that I think the idea that borrowing that has been pushed out there over the last few hours is wrong-headed and fiscally irresponsible. It's not just bad fiscal policy, but it's repeated, been repeated at the city level for the past couple of years. And for those of you thinking that borrowing is a good approach, it will lead to a downgrade, higher interest rates and costs, and push all those capital investments well out into the future, which our children cannot afford. So I want to make sure that people who are saying that we have to go out there and borrow are taken on in terms of this fiscal policy and make sure that we do not go down that path. In terms of the reimbursement costs, many of us were led to believe that over the last couple of years, when the Johnson administration came in, that they would work on the pension issue and disentangling the city from CPS. Now that we have a board, of which all of you are on, we have to work together to make sure we figure this out. And I understand that CPS is looking for new revenue sources, but that really requires the Johnson administration, as well as the board members, to get down to Springfield and start fighting for what those revenue increases are. Not waiting until after the sessions to make comments, but really getting down and working on that to make sure that any classroom cuts, any layoffs, or any other choices, difficult choices we have to make are set aside so that we can get the funding that we do need from Springfield. However, I would want to make sure that people understand that this pension issue has to be resolved and that the promises that were made by this administration are followed true on. The other thing I want to talk about briefly is, we are going to make sure that CPS gets the almost $380 million in tax increment by anything surplus. It's just the law that when we surplus, every other entity gets what their percentage is. And to hear people say that there's somehow going to be some kind of trick or there's some pushback on what the TIF surplus is going to be is, again, wrong-headed and an approach of fiscal policy that just doesn't come true either in sense or practicality. So please make sure you understand that the TIF surplus will be there. I just urge all of you to, you know, applaud CPS for the work that they've done. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that the budget is passed, aside from the unfounded rhetoric that we are, none of our constituents that we share together now want to keep hearing. They want to know that their children are going to be taught, that their teachers are going to be able to get the resources that they need and that this budget provides that for them. So I want to thank you for that opportunity and good luck with passing the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. President Harden, this concludes public participation.
Will now proceed with the FY26 budget presentation.
Good afternoon, President Harden, members of the board. My name is Mike Sidkowski, and I'm the chief budget officer for Chicago Public Schools. My presentation, once again today, will be about the FY26 CPS budget. I want to start with highlighting that this is a budget that protects our schools. Despite the challenges that we've, that are posed by persistent revenue shortfalls for CPS, growing costs, and a deficit of $734 million, CPS has outlined a balanced $10.25 billion FY26 budget that will protect the progress made by our students. Our budget fully protects this level of school funding from the previous year. It funds all of our contractual commitments to our labor partners. It delivers on the promise to stabilize school budgets, eliminating the risk of cuts to classrooms both now and later in the school year. It includes only borrowing that provides current or future savings to the district and is required for necessary capital investments. And lastly, it allows for CPS to reimburse the city for MEABF with new state or local revenues, unlike the FY2025 budget that did not allow for this possibility. I want to talk for a second about the moment that we're in and why it's important for us to meet the urgency of this moment. We must protect our schools. This budget reflects many difficult decisions that were made in order to protect school funding now and into the future. Our schools are already underfunded. Putting schools at risk for cuts now or in the future sets us back even further and jeopardizes the over $1 billion in funding gains we've made for our schools. We need to provide families with certainty. Recent budgets have bolstered confidence in the district's financial future, and we must maintain that confidence of our communities and build on our, our progress. We also refuse to go back. We've lived through years of forced austerity. This budget takes necessary steps to protect our schools from reliving the past. CPS's proposal is also based on realistic expectations. First, around state funding. We've heard state lawmakers express interest in partnering with CPS on long-term reform to address underfunding, especially as we have presented a serious balanced FY26 budget proposal. However, state lawmakers have not committed to additional funding this year, and we cannot budget on unrealistic expectations. When we've made this mistake in the past, it has caused mid-year cuts, mass layoffs, furlough days, and billions in crisis borrowing that burden CPS today. Looking at city funding, CPS's expectation of additional TIF surplus funding is reasonable. TIF surpluses have increased steadily in recent years, and TIF balances remain one of the few viable options for a city facing a $1 billion deficit. Withholding TIF surplus funding from CPS would contradict established city policy or violate state law and would hurt CPS students. We also cannot risk our future. Taking out debt when it is not absolutely necessary will send the district into a downward spiral that will have a real impact on our schools. Borrowing money today at the expense of tomorrow has always been shortsighted. The district did this a decade ago when the state was actively working on funding solutions for CPS, and it still resulted in downgrades, cuts, furloughs, and borrowing. No such proposals are under consideration today. CPS's $9 billion debt burden is already a drain on limited district resources. If we take on more debt when it is not needed, this compounds the financial pressures of the future and steals resources from our classrooms. Lastly, more borrowing may not even be possible. Banking on a risky strategy subjects our schools to the possibility of mid-year cuts. We've talked before about our $734 million deficit, and over the spring months, we made $165 million in progress in closing this gap. With these actions completed, we still needed to identify $569 million of additional strategies to balance the budget. A bit about that $165 million. This included $146 million in department budget reductions, including a $48 million cut to central office spending and a $96 million cut to citywide spending. This included a $34 million savings from school-based grant strategies and programming adjustments, $12 million in savings from a more targeted process for fall enrollment adjustments that will be implemented in fiscal year 2025, and $23 million in projected savings from the district's $40 million fund to stay within contractual class-size limits. Because we preserved our teacher-staffing levels and the student-to-teacher ratios in our funding model, we project that the full $40 million will not be needed for schools in this upcoming year, aside from some schools with unique situations that lead to oversized classrooms. During this time, we also identified two new liabilities that add to our FY26 deficit: $30 million that will be needed for a fund for new special education positions, the first time in years that we've been able to proactively budget for this growing student need, and $20 million required in a reserve fund for district-wide IT projects, many of which will save the district significantly over the long term. At this point, we embarked on a community engagement process, and this takes us to July. Under the leadership of our interim superintendent and CEO, Dr. King, the district spearheaded an extensive community engagement campaign to ensure that budget decisions were being driven by those who are most impacted by them. During the summer, CPS hosted information briefings, in-person and virtual feedback sessions, and an online survey where students, parents, educators, labor leaders, and community partners could grow their understanding of the district's financial situation and offer solutions on how best to reduce the deficit. Several themes emerged from these community conversations. By and large, stakeholders said they wanted the district to keep cuts as far away from classrooms as possible and avoid cuts that would diminish the overall student experience, work collaboratively with state and local partners to identify new streams of revenue to support schools, ensure a more equitable distribution of resources across schools, resist any further borrowing that would drive up the district's existing debt, or go reimbursing the city of Chicago for non-teacher pensions, and continue to engage the community around budget decisions. This leads us to the budget solutions that we have put forth that protect our schools. And following the community feedback and faced with the remaining deficit of $569 million, we have reviewed every line of our budget to develop a plan that protects our schools and protects our students. What we are proposing to balance the budget includes the following: $126 million in additional savings from the, away from the classroom, $149 million in additional available resources, $29 million through accelerating debt refunding savings, $90 million through leveraging one-time funding sources, and $175 million from defining that the reimbursement to the city for MEABF is contingent upon additional state revenue, additional TIF surplus revenue, or other local revenues above our budgeted assumptions. First, on the additional cuts away from the classroom that total $126 million. This is on top of the $146 million that we had already done in the spring and that we have identified line by line through what we provided you in briefings in recent, recent weeks and months. We identified $126 million on top of this. That includes $50 million in savings from additional reductions to central office personnel, streamlining business operations, data teams, and professional development cost, and transferring some functions from the central office level to the network level to provide more direct support to schools. This includes $29 million in savings from repurposing existing state and federal grant dollars to cover existing costs, includes $10 million in savings from a hiring freeze of central office staff, and we will only be filling vacancies that are mission-critical or revenue-related. This also includes a $10 million adjustment to our estimated costs for transitioning five ISARO campuses to become CPS-managed schools in the fall of 2026, as recent estimates have reduced this liability from $30 million to $20 million. We've saved $7 million from delaying some centrally-funded IT projects, $6 million in administrative reductions to departments and central programs that were substantially expanded during the COVID-19 pandemic, $5 million from eliminating food and travel budgets for central staff, $4 million from savings from a negotiated increase in employee healthcare contributions for staff making over $90,000, $3 million in reductions to the CPS marketing budget, and $2 million in savings from reducing the budget for non-union employee raises. In addition to the cuts, we've identified $149 million in additional available revenues. This includes us supplying $45 million in additional evidence-based funding from the state of Illinois. from the state of Illinois that exceeded our initial projections. Beginning of August, the state released data for FY26 EBF allocations to all school districts. And what this showed is that CPS returned to Tier One, the tier of schools furthest from funding adequacy in the state's formula, providing CPS $76 million in new funding for FY26. This is a $45 million increase on what we had previously projected. We are also applying $25 million in projected grant carryover, which we project to have in terms of federal grant dollars available from FY25 to apply to FY26 expenses. And lastly, we are increasing our FY26 TIF revenue assumption by $79 million. In our initial budget outline, CPS assumed that the city would once again supply $300 million in TIF surplus revenue. At this point, we are now increasing the assumption by an additional $79 million to be provided via TIF surplus to match our final 2025 distributions and keep this funding source flat year-over-year. We are also anticipating $29 million in accelerating savings from an upcoming debt refunding. This year, we are planning to issue $1.8 billion in new debt to refund existing debt and provide future savings for the district. This is a process that we undertake annually to take advantage of any opportunities for savings in the debt market. And this year, the opportunity is higher as many bonds that we issued in high-interest rates in the mid-2010s are now callable. Our initial budget deficit of $734 million already assumed that we would take advantage of $100 million of these savings with additional savings targeted for future years. Due to the urgency of the situation that we're facing, we are accelerating $29 million of that savings targeted for FY27 to help close the FY26 budget gap. We're also relying on one-time funding sources totaling $90 million. And this is our continued effort to avoid cuts to schools and to avoid the option of furlough days as we work on long-term solutions for the district. These one-time funding sources include repurposing $65 million from our debt service stabilization fund. As a short-term strategy to help us avoid these cuts or unsustainable borrowing, we'll use up to $65 million here in one-time resources from these balances to help close this budget gap. This fund was established as a reserve fund to assist with interim fiscal year debt service expenses and temporary operating fund liquidity issues. It's previously been fully depleted and used to assist with operational expenses, but due to recent investment returns, it has grown enough to allow for this single use. We are also planning to leverage $25 million in existing philanthropic funding. And as we've looked at every option available to keep cuts away from schools, we're leveraging a donation that we received in 2023 to help close the FY26 budget deficit. Lastly, 26 budget defines that CPS reimbursing the city of Chicago for the Municipal Employees Annuity and Benefit Fund, or MEABF, is contingent upon the district receiving additional FY26 state revenue, additional FY26 TIF surplus revenue from the city, or other local resources beyond budgeted assumptions. Without a dedicated revenue source for this cost and given the financial challenges facing the district, we cannot make this reimbursement absent additional revenue without short or long-term impact to our schools. Importantly, this budget does give us the ability to make the payment if these revenues materialize. I want to talk about how this budget fulfills our labor commitments. And the strategies that we've taken here ensure that we're able to meet all of our commitments to wages, staffing, and programming, included in all of our labor contracts. On top of our negotiated wage increases for teachers, support staff, and administrators, this budget proudly commits to funding for new sustainable community schools, new dual-language and world-language programs, athletic programs, along with additional librarians, tech coordinators, case managers, bilingual coordinators, and other important investment. This budget also avoids furlough days as a saving strategy, one the district has looked to in the past when dealing with budget deficits. And this preserves staff wage gains and protects the important work that's happening across the district. This budget also counts on realistic revenues in the form of TIF surplus funds. CPS has limited options to raise revenue and relies on a few key consistent revenue sources to continue our progress toward financial health and continued investments in our schools. While property taxes and state funding continue to grow and remain reliable sources of revenue for CPS, so does the amount of revenue diverted to TIF accounts that can be surplused. TIF revenues have grown 266% since 2014, and balances that have already been collected now exceed $3 billion. There's two charts on this slide. One shows the annual collections of property taxes paid into TIF surplus funds and not paid to taxing bodies like CPS, the city, and other agencies. In 2024, the last year on this chart, based on the most recently available data, we've seen these collections reach a record high of $1.25 billion in 2024. We've also seen that these balances have reached record highs. And at the end of 2024, these accounts had $3.2 billion in existing funds that had already been collected. In addition to the rapid growth of TIF collections and TIF surplus distributions, TIF surplus is governed by state law through the TIF Act and a city policy through a 2013 executive order and an OBM policy adopted in 2019 and revised in 2025. The city's policy requires the city to regularly surplus unallocated amounts from TIF districts that meet the following qualifications. Districts that are set to expire at the end of the following fiscal year, downtown or financial district TIFs, districts containing industrial corridors, and districts that are not created for a specific project or otherwise categorized as a neighborhood TIF. The unallocated funds in these TIF districts are surplused according to the following formula. All funds in expiring TIFs after a closeout date, the full balance of downtown TIFs, and for all other TIFs, the city uses a tiered structure that surpluses 100% of available funds over $2.5 million, 75% of available funds between $1.5 and $2.5 million, 25% of available funds between $750,000 and $1.5 million, and none of the available funds under $750,000. Beyond city policy, the TIF Act and state law also requires that monies not required, pledged, earmarked, or otherwise designated for payment shall be calculated annually and deemed to be surplus funds. Once a surplus is declared, this law guarantees that the funds be distributed in proportion to the percentage of property taxes collected by taxing agencies, with about 52% going to CPS and about 23% going to the city. This means that if the city uses TIF surplus to close its billion-dollar budget gap, CPS will automatically receive more than double that amount. I want to spend some time on CPS and MEABF as well. The MEABF was established in 1921 to provide retirement benefits to qualified employees of the city of Chicago and non-teacher CPS employees. Illinois law obligates the city, not CPS, to cover these funding obligations. Historically, Illinois statute required the city to contribute amounts that were substantially less than the actuarial determined amounts that would have kept the funding ratio from declining. And for nearly 100 years, the city did not request funding from CPS, and CPS did not pay the city for their obligation. Beginning in 2020, the city requested that CPS reimburse the city for a portion of their costs with the commitment of additional TIF surplus funding to help cover these costs, the funding that did not always materialize, but the district had ESER funding available at the time to make up the difference. The first payment CPS made to the city was in their fiscal year 2020 for $60 million, followed by $100 million in 2021 and $175 million for each of 2022 and 2023. CPS did not reimburse the city in 2024. State law is clear that the obligation for MEABF resides with the city and that the obligation to fund must be met by the city. The city is an authorized property tax levy to raise funds to make the payment to the MEABF pension fund. And despite budgetary pressures and requests for increased funding from CPS since 2020, the city has not increased this levy to help cover these costs. CPS does not have the same authority to raise funding for this, hence the need for cuts or additional resources for CPS to be able to make this payment. In the spirit of partnership, CPS would support a change in state law as long as CPS was given any, given authority similar to the city to raise revenues for this obligation. With that, I'll turn it over to our CFO, Marislava Krug.
Thank you, Mike, and good afternoon, board members. As Mike says, CPS have not included adding to the district $9 billion debt burden as a strategy to close the fiscal year 26 gap. A market for additional debt for budgetary relief may not exist as the district is already issuing $2.4 billion in new long-term debt this year, including $1.8 billion in new debt to save $129 million through debt refinancing and reduce the district overall debt service cost, $650 million in new debt for capital projects, and to reimburse the district for capital expenditures already incurred. If CPS planned to borrow for budgetary relief but could not execute on the transaction, schools could be forced to make mid-year cuts. Most importantly, borrowing for operating expenses would send the district in a downward spiral of credit downgrade, higher interest rates, and steeper cuts to staff, programs, and services in the future. When CPS engaged in this type of borrowing between 2016 and 2018, the district received 34 credit downgrades from Moody's, S&amp;P, and FISH, going from double-A rating to junk. CPS is now paying nearly $200 million per year for this crisis debt. If CPS has had access to this funding today, we could hire at least 2,000 additional teachers. So the graph in front of you gives you a visual of all the credit downgrades that we have had. Since 2019 that the district started having better financial results, we have received 14 credit downgrades. Not even half of the downgrades that they gave us during those times, and still CPS is below investment grade. So borrowing for operating expenses likely to trigger rating downgrade. According to S&amp;P report on April 17, quote, "We could consider a negative rating action within the one-year outlook period if the board fails to implement sufficient structural budget balancing measures in its fiscal 2026 budget and pushes out significant budget imbalance into out-years, resulting in recurrence of sizable operating deficits and materially weakened reserve and liquidity positions that are no longer commensurate with current rating." Also, on August 18, Gene Huang, which is the credit rating for the Chicago Public Schools, was interviewed by Bloomberg. Quote, "CPS' structural stability appears to be on the downward trajectory. As such, any additional one-time solutions, such as short-term loans, would be viewed as temporary fixes that are unlikely to support long-term credit quality." So based on conversations with CPS advisors and on the writing firms familiar with CPS debt portfolio, we expect such a downgrade will result in an increase in borrowing costs of at least 25% per year on every dollar borrowed in 2025 and in the future. CPS is below investment grade, and the impact could drive our rating even lower. This would impact the $1.8 billion refinancing transaction necessary to produce the $129 million in savings that we have already included in the 2026 budget. The $660 million transaction planned this fall for capital funds, the potential borrowing related to the MEABF payment, and all future general obligation transactions. So refinancing savings declines an estimated $1.2 million for every 0.01% increase in CPS borrowing costs. So assuming a 0.25% increase in borrowing costs, impacts will include, we will lose almost all the savings that we were accelerated from 2027 to 2026 by $30 million that is already included in the 2026 budget. So it will create a deficit of $30 million, $30 million in fewer dollars available for capital in 2026, the need to borrow these amounts in addition to the MEABF contribution to overcome the 2026 deficit. Additional amounts borrowed for capital interest to avoid further additions to the 26 deficit resulting from a larger borrowing to cover operating costs. So the chart in front of you will give you a visual of how these loans will work over time. So if we take a $200 million loan for a 15-year term of $200 million, we will have annual deficit increase of $12 to $46 million, which is the debt service for that loan. And over the 15-year period, we will be paying $324 million. In addition, because we lost $30 million in savings and $30 million in capital, we will have to get a loan for those $43 million. We'll generate a debt service of $6 million. And in an 11.5-year term, average year term, it will generate $70 million. So in all, during those years, a $243 million debt will need to be paid back a total of $394 million. So CPS's market penalty for not being AAA each year in recent months has been approximately 145 basis points to 160 basis points as measured by evaluating the price investors pay to buy or to sell from each other. CPS saw market penalties in 2015 to 18 that were two to three times this amount. As a reminder, CPS is now paying nearly $200 million per year for this crisis debt. Even with a half-decade of every strong financial performance, CPS struggles with market credibility given the legacy of financing for operating expenses a decade ago. The penalty charged by investors could be higher. So CPS is already facing a large deficit in 2027 and beyond. So what we've been requested is to do an scoop-and-toss, effectively borrow money today instead of making the December 2025 interest payment, shifting repayment obligation off to the future with the pain of additional high-cost interest due to those years. The total impact of the proposed $200 million in financing today creates $400 million of additional budget gap to overcome in future years. CPS borrows $600 to $650 million annually for capital, creating compounded impact. To avoid a loss of purchasing power, future capital borrowings will also suffer a 25-basis-point increase in borrowing costs, increasing interest costs by an estimated $37 million for each new financing. This increment accumulates with each year CPS issue new capital bonds. I'm going to turn it over to you, Mike.
Thank you, Marislava. So I want to highlight what this budget also does in the long term. We've talked about FY26 and how we balance. But prior to this budget process, we were looking at projected deficits reaching nearly $1 billion in FY27 and exceeding that in future years. After closing the projected FY26 deficit in a responsible manner that protects schools and protects labor commitments, our long-term budget outlook is improved by $468 million in FY27 and similar levels in future years. There's three components to this. The first is actions taken by CPS to balance the budget that reflect a net of $263 million of structural deficit relief, primarily from structural cuts to district spending away from the classroom and increased structural funding from the state. Second, because this budget defines that the reimbursement to the city for MEABF is contingent on additional TIF surplus or additional state revenue above our budgeted assumptions, future-year deficits are reduced by another $175 million. Lastly, CPS has jumped back into Tier One of the state's evidence-based funding formula earlier than expected, adds another $30 million to projected revenue increases in FY27 and beyond. So we're still in a place where we require long-term revenue solutions. And what you see here is our previous five-year forecast before we embarked on the actions that we've taken to close this budget. We see the $734 million deficit in '26, and that grows beyond. Based on the actions that we've taken here, we've closed the FY26 budget gap and reduced the FY27 budget by nearly $500 million, almost cutting it in half, giving us a $520 million deficit to deal with. That's still a big deficit, and we still need long-term structural solutions. But it gives us a fighting chance to be able to protect. it gives us a fighting chance to be able to protect our schools moving forward. To recap some things in the FY26 proposed budget, over the last few months, we have worked to close our budget gap and propose a budget that protects our schools both today and into the future. This budget fully protects the level of school funding from the previous year. It funds all of our contractual commitments to the district's labor partners. It delivers on the promise to stabilize school budgets, eliminating the risk of cuts to classrooms both now and later in the school year. It only includes borrowing that provides current or future savings to the district or borrowing that is required for necessary capital investments. And lastly, it allows for CPS to reimburse the city for MEABF with new state or local revenues, unlike the FY2025 budget that did not allow for this possibility. Looking forward, we will be presenting the balanced budget at the board meeting on August 28 for your approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Members Bannon and Custer.
Thanks, Budget Director Skakowski, for your second presentation of the day and probably your 20th presentation on this budget. I know it's been a long day, but I just wanted to ask a few questions. The $79 million additional TIF surplus money that came available in recent weeks?
Yes, that was recently, that was in recent weeks delivered to CPS as part of the 2025 surplus.
Can you talk about how that came about, just so we can get a sense of, is that an ongoing source? Is that just, from my perspective, it came about differently than usual? So was it from new property that came on the tax rolls? And where, how did it come about?
So my understanding is this was aligned with some expiring TIFs that the city had not projected in their initial TIF surplus that allowed them, within their existing policy, to surplus more than they initially anticipated, thus generating an additional $79 million for CPS.
Okay, so it was TIFs that were expiring that they, for whatever reason, hadn't included?
I believe that's the case, but we don't have that level of visibility into exactly how, but we know the mechanisms that exist and how the money goes after it's surplus.
Some other question is about the TIF policy, about surplusing. I don't know if you can go back to that slide, I think it was page 18? Or slide 18? That one, but go back, get that one. Where, yeah, there's that kind of exact calculation on how surpluses are calculated. Is that, where did that formula come from?
This is what's published in the city's budget book.
In their latest budget book or annually? This is their stated annual policy on how they declare TIF surplus?
Yes.
Member Custer.
Thank you. Actually, I was wondering if you could go, I think it's slide 28 where you guys had the bond, or the potential loan projections. So I understand that debt refunding is a common practice, right? We do that to refinance so we can get a lower interest rate on our payments. Well, maybe it's the next one. Yep, thank you. We don't actually know the interest rate for a potential like this for $200 million in borrowing, because there is a possibility that if there is not a lot of interest in the market and we have to continue to go back and find people that are willing to give it to us, that the interest rates that are projected here could potentially be higher. Is that correct? Or do we know that this is the interest rate if we borrow $200 million?
Mirislava, do you want to take that question?
Yes, so this is Board Member Custer, this is the projection that financial advisors and the investment bankers that are currently working with us have given us, if we need to go to the market with 200 at a given time, we will be seeing. It's kind of like a penalty over the current interest rate.
Okay, all right, but we don't have a projection of the actual interest rate on that potential $200 million of borrowing because we don't know the interest in the market. Is that correct?
No, they estimate an interest, that's why, you know, when we put in the chart is 200 million, and we generate interest payments from, you know, $12 million to $46 million, the interest rate is calculated there. So for example, right now, when we were doing the, working in the $650 million, we were looking at kind of low, 5, 5.25, 5 something. You know, if you put a 25%, now we are looking at higher than 5.50.
Okay.
So now that's how we calculated what the debt service will be. We'll start with 12, we will capitalize some interest, we'll start with 12, which is only going to be interest, and we wait, when we get to 46, then we're amortizing interest and capital.
Understood, thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments from the board? Member Biggs?
Thank you, President Harden. Thank you, Mike. You know, we've heard a lot about the state of Illinois's responsibility today and in previous weeks, but I also know that we've heard the state express that they really are interested in seeing some long-term reform before they come to the district's aid. And it's really clear to me that this budget does just that. So Dr. King, Mike, team, you've really presented us with a serious balanced budget, so thank you. We also heard from city council members today that they too support this budget. We've heard that our TIF assumptions are in fact reasonable. We've heard that we should not reimburse for any amount of MEABF if it requires borrowing. I think it's notable that that sentiment is in line with public consensus that only 8% of Chicagoans support borrowing, and it seems to be in line with the decision not to reimburse MEABF without a dedicated revenue source, to be in line with state law as well. So I'm really proud to be here in this moment as an elected member and see democracy at work. I know a lot of people fought to make this happen, and I thank you all for your hard work, and I'm eager to cast my vote in support of a really thoughtful budget that does center and protect students. So thanks.
Member Paul.
Yes, I appreciate your work and Mirislava's work and Dr. King's work very much on this, and I thank the public members who made comment today. My biggest concern, and I've now listened to this presentation twice, is I don't have a crystal ball, you don't have a crystal ball, we do not know what kind of a TIF surplus we're going to get from the city. I have heard several indications that say that the city is not going to do that much TIF surplusing and that they've figured out other ways to deal with some of their budget issues. So what happens if we don't get this super-record TIF surplus? Then how are we going to balance the budget? Don't we need some kind of a contingency in there that says that if we don't get that money, we will take out a loan so that we are balancing the budget, not on the backs of our neediest and most far-from-opportunity students, but that we are doing what we need to do to protect those very students? So that's really my only question and concern here.
So I think to that question, I think there's a few things that are true. One, we know that the money is there. Two, we know that this is not a long-term solution, but it's the best option that we have available at this time, and this is a budget where we've used every tool that we have in our toolkit. What I will say is that borrowing also, when it's unnecessary, shows that we are not serious partners with the state, that we're not serious about how we're going to be treated by the rating agencies, seeing the impacts there. So I would hope that with the money available, I believe our families have expectations that our city leaders will stand up for city schools on this and make sure that we get
Member Gutierrez.
Yeah, I think I would echo Board Member Biggs in all the hard work that was done, but I think it also, this budget highlights the community's sentiment, right? The community wanting to ensure that no additional cuts happen in the classroom, that we do not take on additional debt that will burden us moving forward. It pays a substantial amount in terms of our long-term stability as a district. And then third, in every poll you see, everyone tells us not to pay the MEABF, and you heard it today from both a progressive alder and a former finance chair alder in letting us know not to pay it. So I too am looking forward to supporting and getting this budget past its finish line.
I'll just say again in closing, echo the other board members in saying this is just a Herculean task to try to deal with the budget and the challenges that are attached to it. My concern that I stated earlier is the same that I have now, is as much as, you know, we hear from alders offering support and commitment for TIF, you know, until it's an IGA that affirms exactly what it is, there are concerns that we have of whether or not it will either meet our total need, because with it being a variable that doesn't really get factored for another three months, that there's a risk associated with that. And even with the calls from alders today saying, yes, you can move forward with it, you know, at the end of the day, we have a commitment as a board to use the tools and resources that are available to us today and not make commitments based on what is being said to us when we can't underscore that with or undergird that with some level of hard confidence. And so I just implore us to think contingency. In the event that we don't have to use it, fantastic. To be clear, no one is citing that that should be the top thing that we do. We recognize the risk in all, I mean, there have been 15 slides that went into the risk associated with doing so, but we should have the same level of, you know, investigation on ways to mitigate it. You know, so this type of presentation should also spend time looking at what are ways, if we do have to do that, we can retire the debt sooner. What other strategies could we employ at the same time? I get concerned about pushing all of our eggs in one basket either one way or the other. So that's just a commentary, it's not an indictment on the work that's been done. It's an ideal budget, but we work in a realistic environment where things don't happen in the way that we want, and we just want to be protected against factors that we don't have full control over. Thank you for your work on this one.
Thank you.
This concludes our budget here, and thank you very much.